Good afternoon and welcome to the 1:00 PM hearing of the Committee on Housing. This meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You will find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website. The Zoom meeting and YouTube livestream event will include the 1:00 PM agenda of the Committee on Housing. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, this committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Tuesday, the 19th of April, at 1:00 PM in this room, Room 225, and a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. For all those participating remotely, testifier audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. Okay, so, members, today we have six Governor's messages. We have three for the HHFTC Board, and we also have three for the HPHA Board. What I think we can do in the interest of time, because I know we're all busy, is to go through the hearing and to take all the testimony on the three HHFTC nominees first, and then have questions for the three nominees, followed by the hearing portion for the HPHA nominees, and then we'll ask questions of the three HPHA nominees. Does that sound good, members? Okay. Our first GM today is GM 637 submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation gubernatorial nominee Gary Mackler. Our first testi-- or we have several testifiers. Derek S.K. Kawakami, County of Kauai mayor in support. EAH Housing in support. HHOC Housing and Land Trust in support, and Karen Seddon in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on GM 637? Okay, is Mr. Mackler here?
I am present, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mackler. Would you like to make a statement to the committee?
Just to say, I appreciate the consideration you're giving me to continue serving on the HHFTC Board. I have been on this board for approximately two and a half years. I, in my work life with the County of Kauai, working in the Development Division of the Housing Agency, I was able to work most of those years with this organization. It's always been a very professional group of individuals working there, and I've seen that firsthand as a board member, and I would like to continue to assist HHFTC and to assist the state in producing more affordable housing.
Thank you. Please stand the line, Mr. Mackler. As I mentioned earlier, we'll be questioning all the HHFTC nominees together.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on Governor's Message 637? Okay, if not, we'll move to our next Governor's Message 759 for the HHFTC Board, Jay Kimura. We have, in support, Jeremy Kimura, Grant Togashi, and Anson Lee. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Governor's Message 759? Okay, is the nominee present?
Not present, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, and our third HHFTC nominee is GM 822, Jason Bradshaw. And we have several testifiers. We have Democratic Party of Hawaii Labor Caucus in support, Ironworkers Stabilization Fund in support, Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus in support, Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association in support, Hawaii Masons and Plasterers Unions in support, Local 630 OPC MIA in support, Kate Stanley in support, and Mike Galloy Senior in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Governor's Message 822?
Aloha, Chair. This is Anthony McConaughey Paris on behalf of the Hawaii Ironworker Stabilization Fund and Managing Director T. George Paris, wishing to testify orally, if that's appropriate.
Yes, please go ahead.
Aloha, Chair and committee members. The Ironworker Stabilization Fund wholeheartedly supports the nomination of Mr. Jason Bradshaw to the Hawaii Housing and Finance Development Corporation. We have experienced with him for the last decade of being able to do work to help Hawaii's working families, and we believe that his insightfulness and his generational knowledge of understanding the plight of younger people in Hawaii needing housing as a primary economic means to be able to afford to live here in Hawaii, we actually support him very much. So we hope for a favorable outcome and available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on Governor's Message 822? Okay, well, I see we have the nominee. Would you like to make a statement?
Real quick, Senator, thank you, Senator Chang, Chair Chang, Vice Chair Kanuha, Senator Moriwaki, Senator Carl Rhodes, also Senator Favella, for scheduling my nomination to serve on the HHFTC Board. I look forward to serving the state of Hawaii and helping to address our affordable housing crisis that exists in Hawaii. We really do need to build a significant amount of housing in Hawaii affordable and for basically to work, you know, a workforce population as well. And we need to get doing that very quickly and very fast, so I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, members, as I mentioned earlier, we'll do some questioning now for the three nominees for the HHFTC Board. Members, do we have any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Just to Mr. Mackler, he's been on the Board. You've been on for two years. I just have had experience. I just want to know what your experience has been. We, you know that we have a major housing shortage, and we're trying to build affordable housing, and what you've done serving on the Board, and what you plan to do if you continue. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I'm not-- okay, here I am. Thank you. Well, I, my focus has been on production, supply, and how to be efficient in increasing or getting the supply out that we can and increasing supply. I can give you one example of something that I noticed when I was on the Board about projects that were receiving financial commitments very early on into their pre-development, projects that required discretionary approvals, like zoning or 201H approvals. And I felt that some of these projects were receiving financing too early in the process, and we're taking too long to actually reach the point of groundbreaking. So during this past year, we worked on amendments to what's called the Qualified Allocation Plan, which is the criteria that's used to evaluate projects. A big part of that is project readiness, and we moved some of the requirements to what we call minimum thresholds so that projects that would come in the door seeking financing would be much farther along and ready to construct, to develop, construct. So knowing the urgency that we have to produce more affordable housing, I felt that was one contribution that I've been able to make while serving on the Board.
Is there anything, excuse me, anything you've seen to streamline the process even further so we can get more housing built, affordable housing built to meet our major needs?
Well, I think carrying a full staff is very important for HHFTC to be able to administer the multiple programs that they're responsible for. I think that with the volume of projects that are sitting in the queue right now that have been preliminarily approved for financing and the new projects that have come in just through the 2022 round called the Consolidated Application, there really are not enough resources, financial resources, to move all of those projects out. So I would, I would want the HHFTC leadership, along with the Board, to really explain the situation in very, very detailed way to the Legislature to look at any possibility for increased resources. Because I think we have the potential to finance more projects if we have more resources.
Thank you, Chair.
Members, any further questions for our HHFTC nominees? Okay, if not, I'm going to make a short statement, and I'm also going to be asking the same questions of all the nominees. I have had a chance to speak with you folks in meetings, and I just want to reiterate some of the points that I've made to you in my meetings in this public forum so that we're all accountable. As you know, we are in the middle of the worst housing shortage in Hawaii's history. We have record housing prices in all four counties. Three of the four counties have house prices over $1.1 million. The example I always give is my father, who, as a UH professor with one state salary, was able to buy a house. Today, for me to buy that same house would take over 40 years of my entire state salary as a legislator. As a result, we've had five straight years of population decline, a trend that is accelerating and which gives us one of the fastest rates of population decline of any state in the nation. HHFTC is legally and morally responsible for solving this housing shortage. The Hawaii State Planning Act, HRS 226-19B, states "It shall be the policy of this state to effectively accommodate the housing needs of Hawaii's people." And I think we can all agree that we are not effectively accommodating the housing needs of Hawaii's people. We heard a little bit earlier about the financing role of HHFTC, but it's not just the Hawaii Housing Finance Corporation. It's the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. And in that capacity, HHFTC has done almost nothing to reverse this shortage. Why hasn't HHFTC advocated for greater housing production at state-owned lands near the rail stations such as Aloha Stadium? Why hasn't HHFTC used its co-chairmanship of the TOD Council to increase housing production in those TOD areas? Why hasn't HHFTC secured long-term affordability for tenants of the Front Street Apartments in Lahaina, Maui? Why has HHFTC opposed efforts to create a Department of Housing? Why did HHFTC insist on incorporating ceded lands into the public lands exemption it was requesting from the Legislature through last year? Why does HHFTC do so little housing development, which is half of the mission in its title? So I want to ask two questions, just two, because I know we're all busy. But I've tried to make these questions very clear, and they're yes or no questions. So I'm going to first ask Gary Mackler, since you were first. The first question, which is, will you commit to requiring HHFTC to create plans to produce 65,000 housing units by 2025, 130,000 units by 2035, or however many units it will take to meet the state's demand?
Senator, I will commit to a plan. I think, as you know, you and I had a conversation several days ago about this, and as I indicated to you in my responses, my written responses, that in my estimation, producing 65,000 units by the year 2025 is not a reachable goal, but that we should be planning for goals that are reachable within an acceptable timeframe. And I know you mentioned 2035 when we discussed this. The process for development simply could not be done within the timeframe of 2025 to reach anywhere close to 65,000 units. So I think that revising that timeline would be appropriate, and I will commit to that.
Thank you. Okay, so, since we have you here, Mr. Bradshaw, I'll ask you the same question. Will you commit to requiring HHFTC to create plans to produce 65,000 units by 2025, 130,000 units by 2035, or however many units it will take to meet the state's demand?
The short answer is yes. Working families in Hawaii are struggling. I think we all know that. As you mentioned just earlier in your statement, home prices are averaging over $1 million throughout the state. No working family can afford that. We need to do everything we can. That includes HHFTC, includes the Legislature, includes all parties to address our housing crisis, because it is a crisis. We need to do everything we can to reach that goal of 65,000 homes. While some people say it might not be possible, we need to figure out a way to make it possible. So yes, I do agree that we need to get to that goal of 65,000 and to 120,000 or more homes needed in the year 2030 or beyond. We cannot be seeing local families leaving the state of Hawaii, which is what they're doing right now. Our families are being split apart because they cannot afford homes. This is homes that are for affordable housing, but also people who are working professionals cannot afford to stay in Hawaii that have good-paying jobs. These are individuals who make $80,000 or $100,000 a year but cannot even afford to be able to buy a single-family home or apartment, and that is unacceptable and that is wrong. We need to do everything we can to keep those local families in Hawaii. Otherwise, Hawaii is not going to be the Hawaii that all of us grew up in and knew about, right? And we don't want to see that happen. It's already becoming a very different state, and let's try to keep all of our residents, local residents, in Hawaii. So yes, I will commit to you. I will commit to the state of Hawaii, doing everything I can as an individual serving on the HHFTC, working with all of you, working with you specifically, Senator, to address the housing crisis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is Mr. Kimura with us? Still not with us?
He's trying. Can we call him? We have this number. He's having trouble logging into Zoom.
Okay, can you coordinate to try to, would you be able to appear and we'll be able to ask you a question? All right, well, we're trying to get our third nominee with us, but he's having technical difficulties. Let me move, therefore, to my second question to the two of you who are here. So thank you for your affirmative responses to the first question. So the second question is, will you commit? So, well, it's been brought to my attention that annual reviews, no reviews, are conducted of the HHFTC leadership, which is, of course, a core responsibility of any Board with respect to its, the leadership of the organization for which it is a Board. So the second question is, will you commit to an annual review of the executive director that will hold the executive director accountable for producing the number of housing units in the plan? And we'll start with you, Mr. Mackler.
Yes, I will commit to conducting annual reviews. I believe there's a great deal of value in doing so, and I have been through upward appraisals, which, you know, not only involve a Board of Directors, but also staff, key staff. And I think there's a value to be derived from doing so. And I know you had a second part to your question. I'm sorry, Senator Chang. You asked about having the executive director commit to the plan. Was that your--
Let me repeat the question. Will you commit to an annual review of the executive director that will hold the executive director accountable for producing the number of housing units in the plan?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bradshaw. Again, the question, will you commit to an annual review of the executive director that will hold the executive director accountable for producing the number of housing units in the plan?
Yes, we need transparency and accountability. And again, working families need relief in Hawaii. We need to do everything we can to address this housing shortage and housing crisis that we're in.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we do have our third HHFTC nominee with us, Mr. Kimura. So, Mr. Kimura, for your information, if you can hear us, we've been asking the HHFTC Board nominees two questions, and I'm going to repeat them to you. The other two nominees just answered them. The first question is, will you commit to requiring HHFTC to create plans to produce 65,000 units by 2025, 130,000 units by 2035, or however many units it will take to meet the state's housing demand?
Yes, I commit to working with the Board and the staff on a planning process so we can meet the goals of more affordable housing.
Thank you. And the second question is, will you commit to an annual review of the executive director that will hold the executive director accountable for producing the number of housing units in the plan?
Yes, but this is not a normal Board, so, you know, I'm appointed by the governor and the director is appointed by the governor. So, but as far as holding the director to a plan, I'd be happy to do that and work with the Board.
Thank you. Mr. Kimura, since you weren't here earlier, is there any further statement you'd like to make to the committee?
I look forward to working on the Board. If there's any further questions you have for me, I'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Members, do we have any questions for Mr. Kimura?
I would. Hi, Mr. Kimura. Thank you. I just looked at your resume, and you were prosecutor. You've worked mostly with a criminal and, you know, in prosecutorial role. But you have had some experience in working with the community. What would you bring to the Board? As you know, you've heard that the real focus is on having more affordable housing that our residents can afford. So what would you bring to the Board?
As a prosecutor, you know, housing was always an issue. We had a victim witness unit and, you know, victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, other types of crimes. Housing was an issue. We also worked with the community and other agencies on developing a strategic plan to address crime in the community. We obviously had assistance from the federal government in developing the plan, but we worked closely with the courts, the other government agencies, and the community to develop those plans. So hopefully, I could bring some experience to the staff in terms of developing some sort of plan.
Have you had any experience working with developers or with the county in terms of building housing or at least beyond a plan, you know, executing on getting housing for our residents?
Not specifically housing for residents. We had several GIA's where we developed emergency repairs. As the director, we also had a program called weatherization, where we worked with low-income families to help weatherize their houses. We also had the program to help low-income people repair, do emergency repairs to their houses. It's before my time, but the agency was involved in helping with housing for the Kalapana area when they had their first major disaster with a lava flow. I also served on the Big Island Housing Foundation for a short while while as the director. So I'm somewhat familiar with the housing programs. We also, I also sit on committees that work with issues of the housing vulture, helping people to save money to be in a position to purchase a house. So it is a down payment. And--
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for the nominee? Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move forward--
Thank you.
--with our three nominees to the Board of HPHA. And the same thing, I'd like to address two questions to those three nominees at the end after we conduct the hearing part. The first of the three nominees is Governor's Message 773, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Directors of the Hawaii Public Housing Authority, gubernatorial nominee Robert Hall for a term to expire 6/30/2026. We have several testifiers. Our first testifier is the Hawaii Public Housing Authority in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee, Hakim Wansafi, Executive Director for the Housing Authority. Thank you for having this hearing. We are in very strong support of GM 773. As you know, the Board Directors need a variety of life experiences and professional expertise in order to effectively fulfill its roles as a policy guide for our agency. Mr. Hall, knowledge and experience as a former employee of HHA and HCDCH, as well as the Department of Hawaiian Lands, will continue to make him a great asset to our Board, providing leadership, support, dedication, and care to the state's often overlooked and underserved low-income population. My staff and I enjoyed working with him, and we look forward to four more years of working with Director Hall. Thank you very much for giving me that money.
Thank you. We have DHHL in support, the Operating Engineers Local 3 Hawaii in support, Hawaii Operating Engineers Industry Stabilization Fund in support, the Mutual Housing Association of Hawaii in support, Blanai Community Health Center in support, Waiohuli Hawaiian Homestead Association in support, Glenn Yamasaki, several individuals in support, including Glenn Yamasaki, Drake Halili, Steve Aruda, Danette Nakoa, Tamara DeFries, Joe Addy Brown, WHHA Inc. in support, Milalani B. Trask in support, Karen Pilts in support, and Doreen Canto in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Governor's Message 773? Okay, I see we have the nominee here. Would you like to make a statement before us?
Aloha, Chair, Chair Kanuha, Senator Moriwaki, Senator Rhodes. I'm honored for the opportunity to continue to serve on the each private chief board. As expressed in my resume, my whole life has been in affordable housing. And I still don't see fruition. I have enough experience to tell you what not to do, but I have enough optimism, especially with what's happening with the Legislature now and its focus on addressing some of the obstacles that prevent affordable housing. I'm optimistic that the agency can do its part to help with those. I appreciate that, and I'm still aware of the situation.
Thank you. Okay, our next measure is Governor's Message 774, submitting Roy Katsuda for a directorship of the Hawaii Public Housing Authority. We have one testifier, Hawaii Public Housing Authority in support.
So, Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee. Mr. Katsuda's many years of real estate development and property management experience did make him a great asset for HPHA Board. As a low-income and house-less advocate, Mr. Katsuda, ethical leadership, life experience, and professional expertise did, in fact, provide our agency with effective policy guidance over the past three years. My staff and I look forward to continue working with Mr. Katsuda, and we stand in very strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Governor's Message 774? Is Mr. Katsuda on the line?
No, not present, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move forward to our final Governor's Message Day, Governor's Message 799, nominating Crystal Nagao to the Hawaii Public Housing Authority Board. And again, we have one testifier, HPHA in support.
So, Aloha again, Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee. Ms. Nagao, years of state development, property management, and facilities maintenance experience will make her certainly a great asset to HPHA Board of Directors. We certainly look forward to her addition to our Board and working with her to further our mission of providing-- to further our mission of providing housing to the most vulnerable of our great state. Therefore, we stand in very strong support of this nominee. Thank you very much for hearing this Governor's Message seven nine nine.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on GM seven ninety-nine? Ms. Nagao, would you like to make a statement?
Aloha, hi, yes, hi. Thank you on both centers for considering me for this position. I am, I'm very grateful and I, I just want you to know that I have a huge under, understanding of the issues that, that we face when it comes to housing, low-income affordable housing. We're in the trenches every day as property managers. I see it from a lot of different sides and, and it's frustrating and, and I just want you to know, though, though very nervous about this position, I'm, I have a lot of optimism that I can bring a lot to the table for our state and our community. I just wanted to thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to testify on GM seven ninety-nine? Okay, if not, the three HPHA nominees, you heard my remarks earlier, and I wanted to ask the same two questions of you. So, Mr. Hall, if you could join us, the first question is, will you commit to requiring HPHA to create plans to produce sixty-five thousand units by twenty twenty-five, one hundred thirty thousand units by twenty thirty-five, or however many units it will take to meet the state's demand?
Yes. And I, I say that with a lot of optimism. As I mentioned, I am tracking the bills that the legislature's put forth. And I can tell you in my years of working in housing and since being retired, this is the most attention I've ever seen this building of housing, give to housing. Now, is that the final solution? No. Every single player that comes on this table and testifies in front of this committee has to work together in order to pull this off. And that's the only way it's going to be done. Every member on our board will emphatically say, yes, that's the optimism we bring to the agency. That's all we believe in, that's all we strive for. The question is basically how we get there, and more importantly, when we get there. The legislation that you folks have proposed, the opportunities, the funding that you're, you know, giving consideration to for housing, you know, puts more tools in the toolbox than ever in the past. For the Hawaii Public Housing Authority, we've already come up with a development plan that produces close to eleven thousand units. Question is, over this many years, not by twenty twenty-five, maybe by twenty thirty-five, but there's still a lot of things that needs to be done in order to achieve that. The toolbox that you've given us gives us more opportunity to do that. Of the eleven thousand or so units, a good eight thousand is on the real line, offering other opportunities, you know, more funding resources. It's a matter of how we put all those pieces together. And that's what the agency needs to do. The board needs to hold the agency accountable to do that because nobody else can. That's my commitment to serving on the board. I, I'd be a hypocrite if I tell you that, you know, I'll, I'll just, yeah, we can do it and just walk away. I've lived this. I'm going on forty years, but I've only been in house, that's all I know. And this is the time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Do we have Mr. Katsuda with us? Yes. But since he's not with us, we'll move to our next nominee, Ms. Nagao.
Thank you, Senator. My answer is yes, that we're not able to gain any ground without a plan. And for me, as a business owner, we need the plan, we need something to execute. At this point, I feel like we're just floating in space, but once we can put something together, then we can properly execute this across the board. So, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so the second question, so Mr. Hall, if you can rejoin us. Will you commit to an annual review of the executive director that will hold the executive director accountable for producing the number of housing units in the plan?
Senator, committee, yes. This present board has already established a tracking mechanism, a monthly report that by numbers gives us an idea where we are with all the plan development, where we are with our occupancy rate for public housing, where we are with our lease up for section eight. All the housing components that the agency is charged to do. We look at that every one. That is a document that I'm proud to say this current Board of Directors was able to construct, and it was done under the premises of accountability, trying to address the when. The how is also the we already know the what. When I came on board, first I, I mentioned to the committee that I only have one question for housing and it's when. I, I really feel we're getting close to answering that question. So, that's a yes.
Thank you. And is Ms. Nagao with us?
My answer would be yes, that I believe this is standard practice and we should be able to have a finger on the pulse as far as what's going on, how we're moving forward, at what, at rate and speed. My answer is yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're still, we're still missing Mr. Katsuda. Is he still not available?
Not present, Chair.
Oh, not present?
And not present, Chair.
Thank you, Senator Rhodes.
Oh, for the two HPHA nominees, can I ask, well, it's half question, half commentary. Do you know why I'm coming back up, Mr. Johnson? So I, I represent the area that includes Maerite Homes, and it's a very large, by, by urban Honolulu standards, it's a very large parcel. It's going to be quite close to the rail, you know, the one corner will be within a couple of blocks. And I, it, it's, it's puzzling to me why the, why HPHA or HHFDC hasn't looked at that for, for redevelopment. The buildings are falling apart already. Not that long ago, the, the state was sued because of the lack of hot water and other problems. Why, why doesn't HPHA want to redevelop a Maerite Homes?
Thank you, Senator. HPHA had initiated development plans for Maerite Homes, I believe, as far ago as maybe twenty fourteen, to start the planning process to potentially increase the density eightfold. Three thousand units in that same footprint. There were challenges in getting that off the ground, challenges with the selected developer that the, the agency faced. But HPHA is still committed to doing the development in Maerites. It makes sense. The location, you know, complemented by the rail can offer some business opportunities to help offset, you know, the cost of development. So it's still on the plan. It's part of the tracker that we're doing right now to create those eleven thousand units.
Okay, thank you. Could I get Ms. Nagao's answer on that as well? Why, why do you think, why do you think HPHA has never done anything with what would appear to be a prime piece of urban real estate?
Yes, um, so, thank you, Senator. I can't speak to this issue as I'm not familiar with that property, but it, it sounds like there's availability for redevelopment. It sounds a little exciting. It sounds like something that might not be repurposed, but just overall redone. Sounds like we, we own the land, which is half the battle as far as finding the property. I'm not sure what the zoning is. But I, I believe that's something that they should look at into, into developing and, and creating maybe a higher density project to bring more units, especially when you're looking at an area that you're not needing to think of vehicle-centric living because it's close to the rail, which is very important in that area.
Okay, well, I hope you'll, assuming you're confirmed, I hope you'll keep that in mind. There are some, there are some neighborhoods that don't want more affordable housing. Eva Lay is not one of them. We'll, we'll take as much as we can get. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Chair, I, I have one question, one more question. Mr. Hall. I'm glad to hear an agency has a tracking device for meeting targets. Are you on target and what happens when you're, you don't meet the target?
I guess that's a question for all developers. Right now, we're a little bit behind target, you know, because some of the unexpected outside of our realm impacts that we have. We're concerned about the water to develop in town right now. We're not sure if that's going to have a, a ranch in our overall development plan. Our current project is up on School Street. We're a few months behind on breaking ground, and that's because we're working at the city, you know, some of that. But that is the task. The task is to try to push through as best as we can through all of these things. The plan and the tracker that we watch every month is intended to keep us focused and not forget about a project over time. So we'll continue to do that as board members, and if we fall behind, we'll try to get that back on track. If administratively, we're not, you know, we're not cutting it, you know, with administration, we have to
I'm glad that, that you are tracking, that I think it's, you know, one thing to track and the other to know why we're off track or, you know, slow and to be able to, to actually execute and, and have a project completed. So it would be good to keep on it.
If I may, Senator, one of the things that, you know, I personally hope for is that there's a more of a collaboration between all the housing producers. It's CDC, it's, you know, HDA, HHFDC, HHA, whoever, Department of Hawaiian Homelands. You know, that, you know, perhaps we can develop in unison and take advantage of quantities as opposed to, you know, shotgun approaches, and then you get the attention of the water supply here, the FOP four developers, the water, and all of that. I, I'm sure there's a way to do that. I'm not sure who does that, but, you know, I would try to advocate for getting you know, I, I, I lived through, I was an uncle, I lived through Hurricane Haiti. I watched out at that island restored itself, regulations and all. It, it was a crisis and they fixed it. So I'm, I'm optimistic, given the right timing and opportunities that can happen.
I believe the chair has been trying to do that with the committees on both the House and the Senate, so if, if not done legislatively, hopefully administratively, you folks can start trying to do that.
You know, I think HPHA, you know, has to do what it needs to do. Hopefully it's in concert with everything else, and you know, we're not taking four months just by arguing with three departments.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, if not, we will go into recess and we'll come back for decision making. All right, welcome back to the Committee on Housing. We're here for decision-making on the six Governor's Messages for the HHFDC and HPHA boards that we're considering today. The Chair first wants to note that since Roy Katsuda, the nominee in GM seven seventy-four, was not present today and was unable to answer our questions, we'll be deferring our decision-making on him. We will give him an opportunity. We'll reschedule a hearing so that he'll have another chance to log in, and hopefully there won't be any technical difficulties and we'll consider his nomination then. As for the other five nominations, GM six thirty-seven, seven fifty-nine, eight two-two, seven seven-three, and seven nine-nine. To start with, the Chair wants to note our extreme frustration with the slow pace of change on the housing shortage here in Hawaii. For years, for decades, for generations, the housing shortage has only gotten worse. And in the tech sector, they have something called a bias toward action. If the, there's an opportunity to choose between action or inaction, we need action. And I want to note my deep frustration with the excuses, with the obstacles, with the problems that are raised and with the lack of forward visionary thinking, planning, how are we going to achieve the goal? Especially at the first of the two agencies today. And so, having conferred, I think this sentiment is shared by all of us, even though we all represent different communities. I think we're all deeply impacted by this housing shortage and the responsibility for delivering on these results will rest in the hands of these members that we're voting on today. So I want to impress upon every one of these GMs that it's the expectation of this committee that you will have a bias toward action, that you will implement plans, that you will create them, that you will implement them and hold the agency accountable to them. That is your job. That is the task that you are being given by this committee. And our committee will continue to hold you and the agencies accountable, as is the job of the legislature for producing these units, because without them, every single day people are leaving the islands. And that is, you know, the great tragedy of our age. Among other terrifying statistics, one of the ones that really I think should resonate with all of us most is that over half of the native Hawaiian population now lives outside the state of Hawaii. And I think that's just one testament to what decades of inaction have led us to. So I think that you've, you know, based on your answers to the questions that we've discussed today in this hearing and based on my conversations with each of you individually, I think you've gotten this message. And so so the Chair's recommendation for these five GMs will be to advise and consent. And like I said, we'll be deferring GM seven seventy-four to indefinitely, but we do intend to reschedule that hearing so that we can ask the nominee, Mr. Katsuda, those questions. Okay, members, do we have any questions or discussion on the recommendations? Okay, if not, Vice Chair, so for GM six thirty-seven, seven fifty-nine, eight twenty-two, seven seventy-three, and seven ninety-nine, Chair's recommendation would be to advise and consent.
Where the GM stated by the Chair, the recommendation is to advise and consent. Chair Cheng.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Moriwaki.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Favela is excused. Chair, GM six three-seven, seven five-nine, eight two-two, seven seven-three, and seven nine-nine. The recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Members, Senators Rhodes and Moriwaki, there being no further business, this committee is adjourned.